All right, it's six thirty. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And we do the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Union. Under God, in the name of the Constitution, the Constitution.
Okay, I'd like to first say that due to the size of the crowd, if you could keep our discussions down to two minutes per person. If there's going to be discussions and like, is there any public comment?
John. John Moranis, Landco Drive, Chairman of the Fire Commission. The fire department goes out, mutual aid, and we also do fires and we have the DEP comes in. They pay us, the members that are certified get a stipend from the state. And by using our apparatus, the town gets money back. And we got two checks, one for four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and another one for eleven hundred and fourteen dollars.
Thank you.
Give those to the general fund or whatever you guys feel like.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. That's a great way to spark the meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Let's be sharing our things. We will drive on my, would you like to suggest that we use that money? I've seen some of those solar powered lights and the corner of Heburn Road and Moon Street would be an absolutely perfect place. Very sunny intersection with a lot of traffic. And I thought it would be lovely if the Board of Selectmen decided to put those in. It would show innovation and care for the safety of the residents.
Thank you, Lizzy. So any discussion is to be on topics that are not on the agenda. Sandra. Sandra, sorry.
Brandy Street. I'm speaking tonight as registrar of voters. I noticed in your minutes and in your town administrators' report that there is ongoing discussions with Novus about the requirement that our absentee ballot boxes be within twenty feet of a camera that is available and accessible to view any person who drops an absentee ballot in the box. And that includes elections, primaries, and most importantly, for referenda. Bolton is currently, we have a budget referendum on June tenth, next Tuesday. We have a budget referendum scheduled if that doesn't pass for June twenty-fourth. And then we have another budget referendum scheduled for July tenth. This law goes into effect July first of this year, which means we need, because absentee ballots will be issued probably within four to seven days after the failed referendum. We need on July one to have that system operational. Furthermore, the state of Connecticut issued regulations on, the Secretary of State issued Regulation nine dash one oh four B one. And in section one H, it says the registrars are responsible for testing the system prior to implementation for any election, primary, or referendum. That means we have to be able to test the system prior to the issuance of any ballots. Up to today, no one has reached out to the registrars to talk to them about the requirements, the testing procedures, and I'm asking the Board of Selectmen to accelerate that process and include us as soon as possible. Thank you.
What she said. Thank you. Is there any other public comments? Seeing no public comments. Oh, yep.
Just so I'm clear, that's the sheet signing, right?
Yes.
So, sorry. So.
Could you state your name, please?
I'm sorry. Sherri DeVoe, one eleven Vernon Road in Bolton.
Thank you, Sherri.
You're welcome. So, real briefly, one of my neighbors, I know one of the topics today is about the quarry burning speeding. And one of my neighbors that lives right next door to me, which is right at the point where Vernon and quarry come together. She could not make the meeting. She just wanted me to just read the short note as far as her expression, as far as what they experienced living right at that junction. So I'm Sharon Fitz Henry Van Dyne, and I live at ninety-one Vernon Road, adjacent to the intersection in discussion. For the past thirty years, I have heard squealing brakes, car horns, and occasional crash from the yield intersection. Also, it is a particular danger to my family as drivers are looking to the left of quarry when they're coming out of Vernon, not right. And a few accelerate through that intersection. That means they are worrying blindly toward my driveway as we pulled in or out. They have been many, there have been many close calls. For the safety of my family and all the drivers through the intersection, I encourage the stop sign option. Thank you, Sharon Van Dyne. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment.
May I ask a question? I think there are a lot of people here who want to speak on different issues that are on the agenda. I just want to ask if they are going to be able to speak during those agenda items.
We'll see how it goes along.
Well, then they have to be allowed to speak now if you're going to not give that.
Not in your corporate time.
Right. So anybody can talk this.
Okay.
And may I get the name of the person on the telephone?
The five oh five nine number?
It's eight six zero eight, yes. Yep, five oh five nine.
Don't have an answer.
They don't have to identify themselves unless they speak.
Okay.
Okay.
You can pull up more chairs if you'd like.
So now is the time to speak about the, okay, I'll be brief. I want to say I definitely support taking some kind of action to correct the situation on Vernon Road.
I'm sorry, I need it. Could I get your name, please?
Years and have used that.
Name, address, first.
Jim Adams, forty-eight Stoneheads Lane.
Jim Adams, forty-eight Stoneheads Lane.
Thank you.
And that is a very handy cut through and a lot of people use that at very high speeds. I go through there. I always do it at twenty-five. Other people do not. And it is, there needs to be some significant actions on that road to fix the situation there. I also want to say that I am very much in support of the continuation of the trail along the edge of the road here down to Brandy Street. I think it's going to be a very good embellishment of Bolton where cars have inundated this town. Continue to speed on the roads, making it almost impossible for people to safely walk on the roads, including that road one year since. It didn't used to be that way. You go back a hundred, a hundred and fifty years and people would easily have walked down the edge of that road, not today. So we need some serious action as well taken to this trail. And I would also like to see it extended all the way to Brandy so that the people walking up Brandy don't have to navigate a couple of hundred yards of the road where they have to be out on the road before they get to the start of the trail. So thank you for the work that you're doing there. Very much support the statement. I do move to leave, though.
Same. Thank you. All right. Yes.
Barbara Modio, fifth to Volpe Road. I also want to provide support to the Vernon Road people. As you know, I'm part of Bike Walk Bolton. And one of our big missions is to make white biking and walking safer for all community members. We actually have a thing that you can sign up the survey you can sign showing where you're afraid to walk or run in Bolton. We have another pledge for you to drive the speed limit in Bolton. From my experience, when I was going down Quarry Road, I wanted to see what these people were complaining about on Vernon Road, since I don't use it that often. So I'm going down Quarry Road and I'm following my pledge. I'm doing the speed limit. I don't know if it's, well, it's pretty low on Quarry Road there.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. The four people behind me, they're dying. They're really mad at me. So I take the turn onto Vernon Road. And the one person right behind me passed me. I didn't see him again. I got to forty-four. I never saw that person again. So I get, I get their problem. And there's no space. There's no space on the side. So I am in full support of theirs. Also, so happy for the phase two connectivity trail. And we started this, I was looking at the Byggen Community Initiative that we built out in two thousand and fourteen. So what is that, ten, eleven years later? You, if you read that, this is a huge part of it, connecting all of these beautiful buildings in our community, connecting the Bolton Center School to the high school. We're not there yet, but this is huge. And I walked it. I proved it. And thank you so much for everything you're doing to continue to connect the town.
Thank you. Next.
Greg.
Greg. Yes.
Greg Cority, fifty-five Quarry Road. Bought that house four years ago. When I looked at it, it's a very nice little house. If I had stayed there in the evening, I wouldn't have bought it. People go down that road in the excess of a hundred miles an hour, all the time. And they're passing each other too. It's a crazy situation. I think the three stop signs might help a little bit. I don't see how it hurts anything. Just my observation. I mean, I remember I talked to you one time and you said you wouldn't use stop signs to slow down speeders. But you said accidents, you said the one time in Heburn Road where because of accidents, that we have to wait until one of our kids get hurt before we get stopped.
So traffic authorities can't use stop signs to control speed. In this case, we would use them to make the intersection safer, but it would likely have a positive impact on the speed. I think is what you're referring to.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Yes.
I'm Hannah Spencer. I live at seventy-seven Vernon Road. I'm very concerned about the safety on our street. First off, the shoulders are ridiculous. Some of them are inches. And when cars, when I meet a car coming the opposite direction, usually they're over the yellow line because I think they're afraid that they're going to run off the road. So I have to steer off to the right to avoid getting hit. The worst part is where Karen lives and Kim, there's a telephone pole that's practically in the road. I literally have had to stop so many times to let other cars go by because they're trying to go around this telephone pole. I have nowhere to go. And unless I drive on their property, which wouldn't be safe. And summer's coming and with that, the noise level from a lot of the cars is extremely loud. And I did have people pass me also on my street. There's one guy especially. He's got devil's horns on the top of his car. He passes me all the time. You know, I go to speed limit to encourage others to do the same, but this guy passes me every time. And I don't know how fast he's going. He's got to be going at least forty, fifty miles an hour, at least that. And it's just extremely dangerous. I'm a person who has had many leg surgeries for the last almost ten years. And my PT wants me to walk. I can't walk down our street. It's not, once in a while I try, but I can't do it. I can't do the exercise that I need from my own home on that street. And I shouldn't have to drive somewhere to do that.
Thank you. Sandy.
Sandra Pierrot, thirty-seven Brandy Street again. I'm going to speak about the Heritage Farm Trail. As I told you at the public hearing, I am opposed to continuing the trail from the barn to Brandy Street. I want to thank whoever promote the proposed trail because we were able to walk it. And if you haven't, I suggest you do. If, unless there is significant money spent between Town Hall and the barn, that trail is going to be nonusable after a rainstorm. After last week's rain, there are huge puddles and washouts and holes. It's going to be exactly like the fiasco that runs from notch road to the Town Hall where it's full of puddles, it's being overgrown by grass, and it's a disgrace to the town. So please do not take action on that trail until you personally have had the opportunity to walk the trail. It's not going to be what people are expecting. I drive Bolton Center Road. I can't tell you how many times a week. When I was a kid, the town built up that hill on Bolton Center Road, and that had to be fifty years ago because the snow would fly across the back cornfield, across the front hay field, and drop onto Bolton Center Road, resulting in significant drifts that the town could not keep up with. Equipment has improved and our town crew has grown, but the environment has changed. If we ever get a significant snowstorm and that hill is cut, which it's going to have to be significantly because if you walk that trail, it's currently sloped like this. You're going to have to make it flat to make it handicapped accessible. The only way to do that is to cut that hill way back. I also remain very concerned about adding amicite to that property. It's a historic property. It doesn't deserve amicite. It deserves concrete or some other permeable surface. Running, and I'm also concerned about the runoff down that hill. Once you take the hill and cut it back, you're going to increase the water that runs down the hill. When you get to the foot of the hill by the driveway, you can't even walk in the path. It's a swamp. So please do not take action until you personally have had the opportunity to visit the site and make sure that our dollars are being spent wisely and reaching the appropriate conclusion. If we spend a hundred or more thousand dollars on something that remains unusable or that creates further problems, it's going to be on your heads. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Yes.
Michael McDonald, eighteen Deer Run Road. In regards to Vernon Road, I don't know if stop signs will help slow speeding down. They not. But there are a lot of engineering options for reducing speeds on roadways. I would suggest that an engineering study be done, not permission of an engineer's study to determine what the best and most viable option is to reduce speeds on the roadway. You really need a traffic or highway engineer to look at this situation and go with the best solution. I was an engineer for thirty plus years, but my specialty was in geotechnics. So I'm not going to pretend to know the answers. But I know a lot of highway and safety and also traffic engineers, they put their head together, they'll come up with a solution.
Thank you.
I got his name again. I could not understand him that well.
Michael McDonald.
Michael McDonald. Thank you.
Eighteen Deer Run Road.
Eighteen Deer Run.
Thank you.
Ross Lally, forty-one Notch Road. So I'm going to talk about the proposed continuation of the pathway. And I like the idea. I think it's good for the reasons people have said it's good, but I don't have faith in the town's ability to engineer it properly based on my own experience with the existing portion of the trail, which gets wet and soggy and sinks over on the town green. And the conditions are way more severe over in the field and along the edge of the field. I just walked it tonight. My feet are wet and soaked. And if you don't do a proper bed on that thing and dig out all that muck, it's, anything you do is going to sink. And where there's some low places and dips, nobody in a wheelchair is going to be able to get through there unless you build it up and level it out to the appropriate grade. And if you do that and you don't prop up the sides of what you've built up, it's all going to wash away just the way it does along the back edge of the woods over here by the town green. And it's just bothers me that we would even think of it and talk about it as making it easy because that slope down the side of Bolton Center Road, that's even muddier. And I agree with what Sandy said, just watching what happens out on Bolton Center Road after it rains. The water uses that pathway as a channel and it dumps it all out down by the fire department. It's washing out that new house's driveway. They have to put hay bales up to keep the water from, you know, running off and ruining, you know, the work that they've done in their front yard. And if the same, and again, I'm not blaming the town crews. I'm blaming the people who oversaw the town crews doing the work here. And it bothers me that we're going to have the same people doing a more extreme type of work and expecting to get different results. So I am liking the idea, but I have no confidence in the way that it's going to be done based on the experience with a far simpler project over there where people just who didn't even understand it's a hill. You get sheet flow from the road into that and it goes and takes the path with least resistance. And it's the same set of situations that we're dealing with here. And it bothers me that the same people who haven't been able to properly fix what was done are going to design and build something new.
Anyone else? Yes.
My name's Ken Welch. I live at fifty-one Vernon Road. I'm here to support whatever can be done to calm the traffic on our road. And I'd like to see a change to the intersection at quarry as well. We've lived on that road for thirty-five years. There's no doubt in my mind, the traffic there has gotten tremendously worse. I happen to live at the pinch point in the road where that telephone pole that almost sits on the road is. Can't tell you how many cars have crashed and been totaled at that, at that point because people hit that with their front right end, hit that pole coming down the hill toward forty-four. And it's resulted in a total of at least five vehicles that I can think of, the time that we've been there and multiple other accidents right in our driveway. And yeah, whatever you can do to calm the traffic on our street, please, please, please. Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you, Ken. But, okay, any other public comment? We're going to move on to, yes. Go ahead. Well.
Drew Pendygrass, one twenty-two West Street. I'd like to speak about the trail, really from Town Hall all the way nearly to Brandy Street, we were talking about earlier. I was, when we, the town bought that in the early two thousands, it was bought as an historic property. And I think that's a very important aspect of the whole thing. So it concerns me that some of that is not part of the town. But once you get to the property where the barn is, that is part of the historic property that was bought from a Rose farm, from the Rose farm. And I can't see it as a bike trail. I mean, a five-foot-wide trail is not a bike trail. Even if everybody's riding in the same direction, they can't pass each other very easily on such a narrow trail. You're going to be into a much more expensive project. But mostly I'm concerned about it chopping up a unique property where you stand on the road and you can see the horizon all the way across a big arc of an historic property, those stone walls. Many of them go back to the Revolutionary War. And we have that on the French Army maps showing exactly where they were. And, you know, we start making exceptions for one group. Other groups, of course, will want to use the farm for other purposes too. And the price of doubling or tripling the width and building all that engineering that can make it a dry road or a safe road is going to be daunting. I wonder too because whether any state agricultural department money helped us buy that as a historic farm. Because they usually have conditions of use when they lend you or they grant you money, even when they lend you money, I don't know. But I don't remember how that went back in two thousand and whatever. So I think we need to work out something else for the safety on Bolton Center Road there. And it is, I bought it a few days ago and it's quite wet most of the way. My boots and socks were soaked and that was water percolating out of the woods two, a couple of days after the rain had stopped. And it's still percolating out there now because it just moves very slowly from the hilltop down across that whole area. So it won't be easy to work on and to solve. So that's about it. Thank you.
Okay. Next.
I'm Nancy Piano. I'm Chair of Bolton Heritage Farm Commission. My first comment is an easy one. I am, I'm here to let you know that I am in favor of reappointing a long-term member, Anne Malucci, and having you appoint Kevin Mason to.
That's on our agenda later.
As Bolton Heritage Farm Commission has done many, many studies. I've also worked with Board of Selectmen, our town engineer, and they are well aware of the wetness along the site and the amount of earthwork that has to go with it. What you're walking right now is a very rough pathway so that you have an idea of where it goes. There are design plans right there. You'll see the boardwalk that crosses some of the wettest area. So I am speaking in favor of the pathway. It has gone through many, many, many iterations. It is not the path that I would have put in, but I am all for having a path in there. And my hope is that they have had the first part of the connectivity grants done with some failing pathways and that they have learned from experiences and what's needed, especially in such a wet and sloppy area. Our town engineer is listening here. I'm sure he's taking focus notes. So as Chair of the Farm Commission, I'm speaking in favor of it. The Heritage Farm Commission members have put together a presentation of our site plan. It's over in the library, but a scale model of the trail that goes through the topography. So if you want to take a look at how it affects the property, go to see this display case in the library. And I would be willing to answer questions after if anybody has questions on how we can impact the historic aspects in the property itself.
Thank you, Wendy. Yes.
Erica here, forty School Road. I'm talking regarding the pathway. I did take a walk Sunday night on it and had to go home and change my socks and shoes because I was wet here. It was, it was really just walking in puddles. My understanding was that it was to be making the access handicap accessible for the farm. I was surprised that the portion that goes to the right of the driveway and then turns and takes a left and goes down along Bolton Center Road, that seemed awfully steep.
That's not handicap accessible there.
Oh, it's not? Oh, that's not where it's.
We have the engineer. We got the cart in front of the horse here.
Okay.
These questions should be asked to him, but we wanted to let you ask comments. So, but.
That seemed awfully like a sharp turn for like somebody with a wheelchair or somebody pushing a wheelchair. I'm like, that's not doable. I was surprised about that. And I didn't even, I tried to go up to the upper part and walk back towards the Town Hall. That wasn't even passive. It was inches and inches.
It's wetlands. There's bridges going through there.
Yeah. It seems like, it seems like it will be a lot of work, but I don't know that it's going to add a lot of benefit for the amount of work. And it does concern me that, you know, I was up there. I was reading the interpretive signs again of the whole Rochambeau site and what the history actually is. And it really hit me because it just seems so strange that we want to start. And it really hit me because it just seems so strange that we want to start not cutting up that land, but changing. I mean, it truly is an historic site. That is nowhere else. This is our historic site. And to start changing that um, kind of disturbs me. Uh, even though this seems like it's going to be minimal as far as what the uh, pathway will be, which is a double-edged sword because I think you're gonna have a lot of maintenance issues because it is somewhat minimal as far as the um, type of pathway that's going to be there. But then again, it's enough to create issues on the historic side. I know they, didn't they just do another archaeological dig last year? We had French residents over and they're still finding new things. And are we gonna not be doing digs in certain areas because now we have uh, not paved over it, but you know, changed the site itself? So those are my concerns. Thank you.
And can I get her name one more time?
Mary Turnhew, forty school road.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, yes.
Reacclined for Bayberry Road. I'm a member of Bolton Heritage Farm Commission. And I also support a path for accessibility at the farm. But I did also walk yesterday and it wasn't just the wetness. I was covered in mud. That took me a long time to get off my boots. And I don't, and I, I think maybe the grass around it, you know, affected my perception of what was going on. So I, I don't really understand that. And I've been to the meetings where it was described in terms of why that path was selected and the, the uh, accessibility and the uh, depth of the land and all that. I under, I, I attended those meetings, but actually seeing it and walking it gave me a different impression. And I would like something that, just to consider, my concern is I don't understand if it's not handicap accessible, why we can't use the driveway.
That's why I didn't want to say anything because it's just, part of it is not handicap accessible. I, most of it is, I believe, from the town hall all the way down.
Right, but that particular piece really goes.
It, it's, it's accessible until it gets to the road.
Not really.
Without it?
Until you get to the town, the driveway.
The town, the town engineer will talk about it when his turn comes, but it is accessible from here all the way to Bolton Center Road.
Oh, so that hill is accessible?
It, it's, the design is accessible all the way to Bolton Center Road. But the town engineer can give more information when it's his opportunity to speak.
Yes.
Sylvia Onpoo, forty-eight Stonehead Lane. I want to say that I support what Karen Piano said, and I do support this trail on the Bolton Heritage Farm, which I have been on for years since it's been open and the thirty-five years I've been here, up and down Bolton Center Road. So I am very much looking forward to a safer option on that. And I really hope that it extends to Brandy Street because the current terminus of the trail still has guardrails on either side of the road and no shoulders. So for safe access and all those high school runners that come through, I really hope it extends to there. I also want to support Mike McDonald's and I hope that we get a proper engineering study to understand what the best solutions are for traffic coming on Vernon Road and hopefully learn from that experience and extend it to other roads in Bolton that need the same thing. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Yes.
One last comment, and I will uh, keep it brief just to echo my father's comments on forty road. My name is Casey Karini, fifty-five forty. Uh, first of all, qualities for popping in and out. I have a very grand, just eight-year-old who wants to be outside all the time, uh, which is a problem where we live. Because he can't walk down the street, as we said, and getting him on and off the bus is an issue. And we have had people low past the stop sign with the bus on a few occasions. So to take his life into his hands to get on and off the bus, possible.
Shoot. Name and address again?
Casey Karini, fifty-five forty road.
Thank you.
Where's the last name?
Karini.
Karini. Thank you.
Yes.
Richard Treat, eight Lyman Road. Um, I would like to thank Jim Rupert, uh, Joe Dillon, uh, and the whole town staff. And I've spent at least five different outings with the two of them about this project over the last two years, uh, including duty above. Jim's creating a well delineated onsite pathway. So an individual without engineering training could go walk it and learn what they learned. That exists now. Um, let me start with my first concern. Um, we bought that farm in two thousand and one. Uh, by a, by a, well, a town meeting. There was one opponent. There were ninety-nine in favor. Uh, this is an historic site, an historic site for Bolton and historic site for Connecticut and historic site for this nation. It's a component of our shared history and it deserves to be preserved. It's real. It looks of all the different camps in the walking that Rochambeau's soldiers did in eighteen twenty-one, pardon me, in seventeen eighty-one. Um, they marched until September, starting uh, late in June, just a few weeks from now uh, to rendezvous with Washington's troops to uh, create a force that was able to win the final uh, battle of the revolution that ended the war. We had won. And part of that story is told on this property. Uh, so I, I want, I want the historic nature of this place honored. And I believe it has the credentials to deserve that. I, I ask you to think about the green uh, at our neighboring town. Uh, oh, I've forgotten the name of that. Um,
Lebanon?
Lebanon. How does that grace the town of Lebanon? It's a place that this farm will take us in years to come. Um, so, so by the historic nature only, I'm very concerned about this path. And by virtue of that, um, I cannot support any trail work past the east side of the barn. The beginning part I support. It's an OSHA thing. There are people and in fact, even myself in days soon to come will need a, a place that's easy to walk to get to this beautiful spot. So I support the first half. I uh, I oppose the second half. Uh, I'm gonna turn now to um, the site visit that I took uh, yesterday. Um, the path is gonna be five feet wide along the flank of Bolton Center Road. I believe I'm correct on this. Joe?
Five feet. That's accurate. He shook, he shook his head.
So, so this is five feet. Uh, and if you're standing at the top of that trail just before it drops down on the flank, headed downhill of Bolton Center Road. Um, you will enter a path that is this wide. It will follow the grade uh, essentially of Bolton Center Road down. That means if someone who's coming up the hill on that pathway that's this wide, if that person finds that their bicycle, what they bought thirty years ago, one before bicycles had power, uh, he may find his bicycle wandering a bit in his lane. This way. Um, and then you might have another user, say uh, like my nine-year-old granddaughter who is um, hard to manage when she senses joy. Um, she might be coming down. She might not have the skill to really be in control of her bicycle. The person coming up might be pumping hard and wandering into her lane. This, this possibility of uh, and horrific outcome is to me unacceptable. Uh, for this reason, and if you disagree with me, and you well may, but if you disagree with me, go over there and walk the beautifully delineated trail and see what you think. Um, you will have your own opinion. Um, and I don't think you'll disagree with me after you've done it. Uh, I, I urge the selectmen to do this very same exercise because it's a, it is um, crucially informative, in my opinion. Um, so I support the first half of the trail from the Prestido House uh, all the way in the driveway at the site of the house and barn. I do not support any efforts thereafter. Also for the historic thing, I don't want, I don't want the site to be um, blighted by by this kind of fooling around, especially in view of all the hoops we have to jump through grade-wise and then the, and the unavoidable grade from flank trail down to the bottom, which, which I see no um, plausible solution for. Um, so that's my hope. I hope that you will let approve the second half. Um, and and that's my journey. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, that's it. Can we have uh, Joe give us a rundown on some of these? Is there any online? Yes.
Chairman, I need to ask the board to consider opening the agenda.
Uh, okay.
Before we proceed. Um, this evening, we now pay the force uh, uh, another reappointment um, so that it doesn't expire unexpectedly. Uh, the reappointment would be for reacclined to the Heritage Farm Commission as a full member permanent. So that would be five E.
One second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's seven, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to ask for another reason to open the agenda. And that is under correspondence, we have five new pieces that came in. Uh, correspondence that actually reflects on discussion that we will have on the agenda.
Yep.
Uh, the first one is from Richard Treat, the second one is from Barbara Modia, third one is from Sylvia Onpoo Adams, and third is from Pearl and Linda Armstrong, and the last one is from Jim Adams.
Now, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Seven, yes. Zero, no.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, could I get a second on that one?
Bob, Bob Moore.
Was that for the first one as well or was that?
No. M- Mather seconded the first one.
Okay.
Bob seconded the, the, the next motion.
Thank you.
Yes.
Because I believe we need time to read the correspondence, those that just came in today. Uh, I, first I would like to ask that number, I think number six, we move forward in the agenda right after the public comments, we can ruse what is written before we go on to ongoing business. And then I ask if that would be accepted, that we move the correspondence up to three A.
I'm gonna insert a second. Do, do we have them here? I don't know. We all have it. I don't have it on paper.
They have on paper. We'll share them. So, so my request would be that we move it up and that we take a five-minute recess so that we can share the papers.
Is there any discussion or is there something? I'll second. Is there any discussion?
I'm just concerned that the public, uh, we should let the public know exactly what's happening so that they will stay to hear that discussion. You know, if it, if it's a five-minute recess, like make sure that everybody knows it's only a five-minute recess. So.
Should not to read aloud the correspondence and just leave them available?
That's up to you, Mr. Chairman. My, 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 the motion is to move correspondence up to three A.
I think most of the correspondents have already spoke tonight. And they've just been repeating.
If only one, but not everyone has seen it on the board and I think they said.
I, I saw, I saw it. It came in this afternoon.
Yeah, we all got it, you know.
Is there anybody who?
Would you recommend, may I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mary, would you recommend that we do not pass this motion?
Um, um, yes, I think that everybody who, who sent correspondence in is here except for.
The Armstrongs.
Except for the Armstrongs. And I just don't want to break the momentum of the meeting. That's, I'm, I'm that's it. I mean, I think, and I think that reading it would be just as, uh, just as easy to do. Just read it aloud.
It's out of sequence on the agenda. And we'll be hearing from Joe Dillon first before we talk about the correspondence. That's why the motion was to move the correspondence up.
Yep, that's fine. But could we do that without having a recess?
That, that, and upon recess would certainly be the chairman's prerogative and not part of the motion.
Okay, great.
Okay, no recess. Start reading.
Will we have to approve it? There's motion on the table. Mr. Chairman, you need to call for the votes.
Uh, who seconded? Jim, I did. Mather was first seconded. Any discussions? All in favor? Move it up. Five, yes. Did you vote yes? Yes, yes. Okay, seven, yes. All right.
Mr. Chairman, three A would be in order.
Three A, move it broadly so it's the three A.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So simply done with public comment. We're gonna go to three A, which used to be number six. And we're gonna sit here and read correspondences. Uh, sent to Bolton Selectmen this morning. Okay, that was this morning's. Uh, Richard Treat, friends, I ask each of you to wish the new outs staked out in the proposed route of the Heritage Farm that now exists at the farm, especially the section that runs from the barn down to the terminus, terminus. After returning to Bolton on Sunday, I walked it for the first time yesterday is crucially informative. Thank you, Richard. This email is, this is from Barbara Modio. This email is for the Board of Selectmen. I am writing to express my overwhelming support for the continuation of the connectivity trail from the Bolton Town Hall to the Heritage Farm and beyond. I sincerely hope that the connectivity trail were users all the way down to the crossing for Brandy Street, that way the high school students and runner teams or students traveling to and from the school will have safer connection. Walking and running to Bolton Center Road creates hazard due to the metal barriers. I can't imagine a more beautiful amenity than to be able to walk from our town center through to the beautiful Heritage Farm. Thank you for your pursuit of this. Barbara Modio. My name is Sylvia Onpoo, on, sorry, Onpoo. And I have been walking, running, cycling Bolton since my move to Bolton in nineteen fifty, fifty. I strongly support the phase two connectivity trail that will enable Bolton residents to navigate more safely around the center of town. I am very much looking forward to enjoying the views of Bolton Heritage Farm and have not, not having to navigate to Bolton Center Road, which has guardrails and no shoulders on the eastern section, making it very unsafe place for walkers, runners and cyclists. My only concern is with the proposed phase two of the project that is off road connectivity trail will stop west of the of, or prior to Brandy Street. The last section, last section of Bolton Center Road has guardrails on both sides of the road and no shoulder. On the north side, there is a deep ditch. And as a result, they were to move out of the way when a motorist drives too close. I hope that Board or Board of Selectmen will consider this safety issue and extend the connectivity trail eastward to Brandy Street. Uh, this is from oh, uh, Linda and Earl Armstrong. As a member of Bike Walk Bolton, I want to voice our full and enthusiastic support for the continuation of the multi-use track path along Bolton Center Road. One important change would be like to see an extension of the trail to the intersection with Brandy Street. Most users, including students from Bolton High, will face a dangerous situation navigating Bolton Center Road between Brandy Street and the current planned end of the trail, diminishing the value and the use of the new trail. Thank you. And the Board, uh, thank you and the Board of Selectmen for all you do for Bolton. Thank you. Uh, this is from Jim Adams. All right, Rod, I want to voice my full and enthusiastic support for the continuation of the multi-use path along Bolton Center Road. Like many other rural towns in Connecticut, roadways and car traffic have inundated our community and become more and more dangerous for pedestrians and cyclists. It didn't use to be, it didn't use to be this way. The pathway will help bring back the ability for townspeople to enjoy moving around and seeing beautiful town, including the Heritage Farm. The pathway is major plus for the Heritage Farm. Our one important change I would like to see is the extension of the trail down to the intersection with Brandy Street. Many users, users include students from Bolton High School will face a dangerous situation navigating. Many users, users include students from Bolton High School will face a dangerous situation navigating Bolton Center Road. Between Brandy Street and the current plan ended the trail diminishing the value and use of the new trail. Thank you to the Board of Selectmen and all you do for Bolton. Uh, this one is from Ellie King. Good morning, I wanna voice my support for the traffic calming measure for discussion on the agenda tonight. The intersection of Vernon Road, Quarry Road is dangerous and as you know, I also feel that Vernon Road is dangerous and under. Uh, with the number of speeding cars and hope that you will be able to continue the work of making these towns. These areas of towns safer for all residents. I also wanna voice my support for the continuation of the shared path along Bolton Center Road. Once key change, one key change I would like to see is the extension of the trail down the intersection of Brandy Street. Many users include students and walking to and from the high school will face a dangerous situation navigating Bolton Center Road between Brandy Street. And where the current planned trail ends. I hope you will consider continuing the path to improve the safety and promote the connection. Thank you for all you have done to support the safety market by getting a drive in a bowl, Ellie King. Uh, and then there's, is there another one?
Yeah, I think that was it.
Uh, there's more. Yes, I'm off the hook. You wanted to do this.
Are you talking about the letters from Sarah and Tim?
Don't read one, you read them all, right?
Did you read Jim Adams?
I read Tim Adams, yep.
Okay.
Uh, and now we have this one from Sarah LaRoche. First, let me preface my email with a thank you for all the dedication to helping our small community function with limited business and relatively small population. That is no simple task. I am writing today because of the proposed budget that is to be voted on next week. On May twentieth, I will state that I am by no means an expert of municipal operations or like. I am coming from a perspective of a resident in six years. My fiancee and I moved to Bolton because of the small town charm and rural atmosphere. However, as the world has changed over the years, it has been alarming to see how much our taxes are rising year by year. It's my belief that such a projection is not sustainable. Many of our residents are elderly demographic, around twenty percent of whom are burdened by fixed income on top of possible health-related financial obligations. The more concerning issue is the fact that sixty percent of our population falls into the working age bracket, which will eventually transition into a retired elderly. Elderly demographic. Obviously, costs are set to increase and that money will have to come from somewhere, but it feels that the burden will be shifting. More and more onto the residents of Bolton, people who have grown up in town and are attempting to live out their lives here. Not seeing increases in income as they are retired. To offset the taxes which result in beloved, in beloved members of the community having to leave through affordable options are few and far between in Connecticut. Yes, there are senior facilities, but there, these establishments, establishments often have multi-year wish lists, wait lists. Which just isn't feasible for most individuals for those in the situation. And this trend continues, the majority of the population will be unable to afford to stay in town. As we reach retirement age, may we be so lucky. For our small house right now, our taxes are between forty-seven hundred to five thousand currently, they would, that would equate to around six hundred dollars a month. Just in tax payment and that number will be set to continue to rise again. I am projecting for the, a place of speculation based on current trends. We have one of the highest mill rates in Connecticut, buying with towns with much wealthier citizens, a bigger population and more business. We are a rural and sizable chunk of the population and not absurdly wealthy. These increases, increasing tax burdens also drive business from settling into our area. One of the benefits of Bolton is that the natural beauty and idealistic, idealistic rural lifestyle. But it may be time to consider joining with other smaller towns to adapt to change coming in the future. It appears that the twenty twenty-six budget is set to allocate around seventeen million toward our education system. Two schools under, of under one thousand attendees combined. I am aware that the expense, expenses such as staff busing similar are also increasing and are influencing the increase. What I am proposing is to consider the idea that may be time to, for Bolton to assist school system to join regional district. I have often heard that Bolton schools are a good place with a ratio of around nine students per one teacher. However, it is a similar ratio for RAM. I wonder if it would be possible to reduce the burden of inhabitants and taxpayers by moving our operations into said regional school system. Our current, current school building could be repurposed and perhaps address other needs in town of which I am currently aware of. I'm not currently aware. This initiative would of course be a huge undertaking spanning several years. I value the education, it's one of the reasons I love living in New England, but as more families are forced to make conscientious. Concessions on having children or fewer children, the allocation of funds need, needs to start shifting as well. As I am rambling on here for a while, I will end my email here. I hope to hear back from you with your board's thoughts within a prompt manner. Thank you, Sarah LaRoche. Uh, this is from Kim Opina. Uh, a traffic calming petition was initiated by Kim. Uh, at fifteen Vernon Road in Bolton due to an ongoing safety concern with the residents who live in Vernon Road. The petition was circulated to residents of Vernon Road during the month of January twenty-five. The following statement was included in a petition relating to traffic calming studies, measures, sorry. To improve safety and quality of life, I am proposing that we petition the town to implement traffic calming measures along the road. These measures could include speed humps, not to be confused with speed bumps, signage, road narrowing. Or other strategies to reduce speeding. If you agree with these action, that these actions is needed, I encourage you to sign the enclosed petition. A total of twenty-seven residents, seventeen households from Vernon signed the petition. That their names and the Vernon Road street addresses are listed below. A full version of the petition is attached to the letter. Original signed petitions are available and copies were distributed able. The Board of Selectmen meeting, sincerely, Kim. Uh, and then she goes on to list the names of this people who, and then we have another letter here from Kim on.
I think that's just the letter to the residents.
Okay, uh, do we need to read the residence letter? Alright. Uh, okay, how do they go? Don't ask me what I said. Okay, that's the correspondence, so now we're ongoing business. So we go into Joe Dillon on the Quarry Road intersection. Joe.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah.
What's our plan?
I looked at um, some options, um, obviously the um, stop controlled intersection. Um, it is, it is a difficult intersection just from a, from a geometric standpoint. So it is warranted strictly from that standpoint and not being a um, a, a speed issue. Um, that will slow some people down, obviously, once they get past the intersection. Uh, coming from the top of the hill, they, you know, you're not gonna stop the speed per se, but it should help to, it should have an effect on speed from that. Um, you know, other, other issues, the other um, methods have been used or, you know, speed humps, speed bumps, speed tables, all sort of the same thing. Um, that comes with a whole other, um, a bunch of issues with noise. Um, you know, delays for emergency vehicle delays, there are some, the studies that show it's minor, you know, it's matter of seconds. Um, and delays there. Um, it's one of the things I, I noted for speed bumps, um, I had a project in Wellington a few years back and Cedar Swamp Road. Um, runs via, for Route one ninety-five, heads to a um apartment complex primarily. Um, that are UConn students, so I think that's what. Uh, warranted the, the, the speed bump, so it's kind of a good idea to go look at that, it's very flat road though too, so. Um, if anybody wanted to see what that kind of looks like. Um. Just some other options, um, one-way street, uh, one-way by what probably say from forty-four up to the top. But that again, um, brings issues with emergency um, response. Also, when you get to the top of the hill, again, that intersection is not the greatest and. Um, you know, larger delivery vehicles or something to make the turn, um, to go back down Quarry Road, that might be difficult there. Um, you know, I think probably the first step would probably be to. To place stop signs at the intersection at the top. That would require some realignment of the intersection, mostly tightening it up to very wide intersection, which again leads to some of the speed. Uh, from people coming from, um. Coming down the hill, they just, they could just kind of bank a turn and keep on going, you don't have to, you don't have to probably can still maintain about thirty, thirty-five miles an hour. And not even, you know, to negotiate that turn. So we would close that up a little bit straight better, uh, very similar to what we did in South and Stony. Um, several years ago, that was a similar intersection, kind of a mirror image, but uh, you came uphill and it was a tight intersection. And people really wouldn't even, that was, had stop signs on it at the time, but people would not stop before turning and heading down. Uh, Stony Road, so that helped, we tightened it up a little bit, you have to stop and you have to negotiate a turn there, so that, that will help a little bit there. Um, now those are kind of the immediate options that I looked up, uh, we didn't, I had discussion with Jim about this and I looked at. Some of the um, federal highway, what they offer for, for options in situations like this.
Amanda.
Um, Joe, since we've had a couple people in the audience speak to the need for a study by a traffic or highway engineer. Is highway and traffic engineering your specialty? And if not, have you included any individuals from your team whose specialty is traffic or highway?
We do not have a traffic specialist uh, on staff with our, so we, we have. Um, people that we have, consultants we have used to perform traffic studies in the past. And if that's the, uh, if that's your, your choice, then by all means, um, no objection to that. We could um, provide you, you know, we could, we could hire somebody and just, you know, pass through the costs, um. You know, there's no upcharge on our part if that's what you choose.
Do you have an estimate on what that would cost?
I haven't discussed that with anybody yet, um, but I can provide that to you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Baron?
Yes, Anne.
May I ask a question to Mr. Rupert?
Yeah.
Would it possible, be possible to use CROG engineers uh, on a town?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, are tabletops an option on the road to slow the traffic?
They, they, they are, um, but some of the research I was looking at that, um, noise is a big issue with that. You have, um, box trucks and landscape trailers running over these things all day long and, you know, that's just gonna be. Um, that's gonna be a noise, um, issue. The other thing too is, as we experienced down at the intersection, I believe it was Webster Lane and, um. Road, um, you know, people slowing down to negotiate the speed table or speed bump and then speeding up again after to the next one. Um, that was an issue down at Webster, people stopping for the stop sign and accelerating out the stop sign, some of them, some of the residents had issues with that. Um, by all means, they, they, they do slow down traffic, they do work. Um, but they, like I said, you know, you wanna go, uh, run out to Cedar Swamp Road in Wellington and then just take a run through that, you'll get a, you'll get a feel for. Um, you know, what they'd be like, that's a long straight stretch of road that have, uh, uh, they have like a, like a speed humps. There's three to four different types of, of uh, speed bump classifications, but that's what they use.
So the, the concerns, the only concerns I've heard so far are the speed on that road. And I don't know, I don't think the noise, the speed bump noise would be the issue, I don't know. Anybody wanna give me a nod if you are opposed to the speed bumps and cars going gunk, gunk, and the trucks?
I think it's more the revving up after they go over the hum.
Well, that's the, it's, but would you rather have slower traffic or revving? I, I think slower traffic is, is what they're looking for, I don't think that's a concern. Therefore, just.
I think the point I'm personally living on Vernon Road, it would discourage people, some, some of those people from using the road. I agree.
Bob, go ahead.
Yeah.
That's no, that's no. Alright, so, um, one, one of the issues, one of the issues brought up. And because I know it's an narrow road and, and, and the, uh, the right away through there, it's exceedingly narrow. Um, the edge of the road and most cases is right out, right up to a property line.
Right.
And on the other side, it's up to basically a rock cliff there or stone wall. So exceedingly, exceedingly limited as far as width. Now, someone brought up the issue of a, of that pole and that's an issue that. I think it's a frontier pole and most of those poles are, that perhaps we could certainly contact them to express the concerns. I'm not sure, uh, if. How much, um, action we can get on it, but I, I can't, that might be something, because it. That, that, that is, I mean, it's, it literally is on the edge of the road, I know exactly that pole, I travel over the road all the time. And that, that's one thing that could at least ease the, uh, issue of. That, that is a, a, a true, uh, narrow point right there. That, that might solve the, help solve that issue. And, but I also, I also, well, I, I've looked at, I've never was a component, a proponent of stop sign, but. What you have here is the safety of an intersection and it's, it's, it's. I think what we're looking at considering is a toll, is a realignment of that intersection to make it a T intersection. When you do that, everybody stops, that stop signs, yeah, there's the app, the, the person, excuse me. Who is not thinking, is being a jerk, will blow through it. That's gonna happen no matter what we do, we, we cannot account for driver stupidity. But we can account for the majority of the people who will follow the rules of the road and I think that's, that's what we have to concentrate on. And, and that's, that, that type of, of solution deals with two issues. One, it has that calming, cause you've got, you've got traffic coming up over the hill from Vernon Road. Um, Quarry Road rather, coming down off that section and by the time they're hitting that area, they're booking through there. Cause I traveled that four, five times a, a week. And more so than the other way, I, I, frankly, I, I see traffic coming up, uh, quarry. That seems, that traffic seems to go at, I don't know why, much slower pace. But coming the other way, it's like everybody wants to get the hell out of Vernon and go down that intersection, so it moving, and just like appears that way. But, um, but I think that's why, when I looked at it, as much as I hate stop signs, I saw that as, as a real. Possible effective solution.
Amanda.
I feel like there's, you know, three different things being proposed, right? The stop signs and the realignment, the speed bumps and or one, I wrote down one-way street, right? And I think that speed bumps or one-way street are both to kind of get a potential speed and, and safety on the edge of the road issue. So I, I mean, I would be interested in people, how people feel about those speed bumps versus a one-way street. And I say the one-way street only because one way I believe Joe going from. Um, forty-four up to the quarry intersection, only because I, and I don't know the history of. The safety at the, of trying to pull out left or right at the bottom of Vernon, right? I usually only turn up Vernon, I'd never pull out of there. And so if you make it one way up, then you reduce any safety incidents and force people to go down to the, the quarry intersection where there's the, the traffic light. Um, so I, I don't think I foresee both of those being necessary, but would be interested.
I see fire trucks piling up because it's a narrow road. If you put a dead end.
No, not a dead end.
One way.
One way, it, so instead of, you wouldn't be able to turn right, going up quarry to go down or turn left at the fork to go down towards forty-four. It would just be one way, so I just didn't know how folks felt about those various options. Cause everybody spoke in favor of calming measures, but nothing in particular, I guess.
Tim.
Well, as human beings, one of the hardest things is to be self-aware. And if you don't feel that way, you may not be self-aware. And so anecdotally, I know there's some folks that really find it helpful to have the digital indicator. Because most of the time they're not bad people, they're just not paying attention and it is. I know there's some folks very close to me, they're like, I didn't know I was going that fast, it really helps me slow down. And so that's an anecdote, which is not facts, so if Joe has any data, that would be great, but it seems to help people that I know.
They have on a quarry road, they didn't slow anyone down.
It may make a couple people go faster, but the, the hope is that it would only be positive, possibly. Except for the worms underneath it.
I know the, the, uh, concept of one-way street was brought up, which I think is a, a bad move. Um, he, that street, I mean, there's a significant number of residents on that street. And, and you are serviced by all kinds of trucks, both oils and whatever, service trucks. Uh, lawn care, all these vehicles and doing it in one way, I, I think it creates more of a problem than, than, than it does. Uh, solve, uh, uh, provide a solution to what's going on. I think a, uh, other alternative would be a far better way of dealing with it. Uh, making one way. Uh, making one-way streets are, that's the ultimate. It went all else has failed and there's no other solution. That's maybe when you would consider it. That, that would be on my list of one in a hundred.
Then because there's no one coming at you. So it's a girl in line.
Well, that's the other thing. Go like hell up the street.
I think that was more like Joe exhausting all possibilities and presenting.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think as well.
Discussion amongst the board.
Jim?
Yes.
I know there are people in the audience that would still like to speak and this is not, I mean, gendered for me, for us to make a decision this evening, um, that I, I would propose to the board that we place this on the next decision that, as we've heard from Mr. Dillon. And they will give us another month to think about the issue and give our residents another chance for them to reach out to us if they so wish.
So I guess the question here is, do we spend more money with Joe Dillon to move this forward? Uh, he was only tasked to uh, look at the stop signs, the intersection part, right? Not the one-way street, not the
So the discussion we had was specific about realigning the intersection, adding stop signs and traffic calming measures, which included speed, speed ups.
Okay.
But those are the things that when he and I had a very lengthy discussion about this, these are the decisions that we came up. It's our recommendation that those would be the most immediate things that we could do that would make a positive impact.
So do we want to make a motion to spend more money somehow? We don't know how much. And get a traffic engineer involved and so forth and so on, or just have Joe get us a price?
Yep. Do you need a traffic engineer to design the intersection or just?
I have no idea. Joe, Joe, Joe has already looked at that and he estimated between surveying and design work that that would be about $7,000 to redesign the intersection.
Just to redesign.
Just to redesign. Yep. So we just want to table this whole thing?
Well, so
The agenda move, make a motion to do anything, we would have to add it to the agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
Chairman, I would propose that we add this to our agenda next month.
May I just for clarification that what, what Joe or what you had, your conversation with Joe was talking about adding stop signs, adding speed bumps and one other thing too. There were, so there were three elements to this or? And realign to the team or not? Those three?
Realigning.
So all, doing all three of those things as part of this, as part of step one?
The realignment is the stop signs. That's what that would be on.
Right, right. The stop signs will require realignment. Realignment is a step in adding stop signs.
Okay, but I wanted to make sure that, that, so that the, the speed bumps are included in that.
Yes.
As, okay.
So we postponed.
Okay, so this is being postponed till next month.
Well, I'll move it because also the question was asked and we can also find out. And you, you asked a good question. What would it cost if we hired an engineer? We have that information.
A second to the motion? What is the motion again?
Motion is postpone the uh
To ta, to table this till the next meeting?
Till the next meeting. So, so we can get a little, a bit more clarity and information and additional feedback from many of the residents. There's a lot here, but should anyone else want to comment on the suggestions that were made tonight, I think that would be helpful.
I don't believe it's tabling motion. I believe it's a standard motion, so it is available.
I'm just wondering when, what, what day you're talking about having the next
Yeah, you say the seventeenth or you say in July?
We can say it.
Seventeenth, we have the public information session on the first selectmen salary.
Yeah, that's definitely. Now in July, we, that's getting tables. July, we, we, we still have to, we still have to be concerned about a budget, though even if
Make it July.
Yeah, I would do the July budget.
July, the July regular selectmen meeting?
The July regular selectmen. Yeah, yeah. Uh, so you second that?
I'd have, yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's seven, yes. Sorry, no decisions tonight. Move to
Decision they've made. Yeah, the team in advance.
Well, we didn't do anything yet.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim, uh, we are very cautious and careful because of the public's input. I won't be able to put into our agendas when we have consider and act on something. And in this particular case, it's ongoing business. It was for discussion, not for action.
Action.
So that's why it behooves us to wait another month and to give others a chance to come back with more thoughts. Uh, if you have something to address and something comes to mind that you would like to share with us, it gives you a bunch of and obviously the right idea that I'm here.
Uh, okay, now for B, discussion and possible action on Heritage Farm Trail. Um, we have Joe Dillon again.
Yep.
This is what to jump in on this picture and start from the top where everybody's getting their feet wet in the swamp and
Yeah, um, the, as, as was mentioned, um, someone mentioned earlier, there is a, a boardwalk portion of the uh, the trail that's gonna basically bridge that wetland area. Um, and it will be adjusted um, based on the condition. I mean, we'll, we'll look at it carefully. I may have to extend it beyond. I, it's basically within the limits of the wetlands right now, but may have to extend a little bit beyond that. Uh, we did try to stay up, sort of up towards the wall where we get a little higher ground there and we'll get out of it soon, but it will, there will be no wet areas that we'll be walking through right. Unfortunately, right now they stake the trail. Um,
And this has railing and it's five feet wide?
It's going to be, um, I, I don't have the, it's going to be uh, eight feet wide minimum, I believe. Uh, except by the, I have enough detail in front of me. It's wider than, the five-foot portion is simply from the base of the driveway down to um, the bottom of the hill. And that's strictly because um, and you can kind of jump, I'll, I'll jump ahead a little bit to that um, discussion. I know, I know Richard had talked about that, the five-foot. Um, that's more following definition of a sidewalk, just truly on definition itself. Uh, the five-foot width is typical, we use for any DOT, um, any walks along sidewalks along state secondary roads and things of that nature. Um, typical, most, most um, town sidewalks within neighborhoods and towns are typically four feet. Uh, the DOT requires five feet. Um, we've done some on Route seventeen in Durham, Route seventeen in Portland, uh, and areas like that. Um, so that's what, that's where the five feet came from. And it's not ADA accessible because it is following the grade of the road and we're not otherwise we'd be switched back and, back and forth all the way down the hill to maintain the five percent because that's, that's ADA. Um, accessibility grade minimum. Um, so that's kind of where we head with that. Um, going back to the, the, the boardwalk will be as wide as the trail that passes through eight feet wide. It passes through the, the upper portion over to the barn.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Now, that, that walkway is going to be installed with screws, so there's no damage to any wetlands?
Correct. We're using the helical piles. Um, and those are basically um, like giant corkscrews that get screwed into the, into the soil until you reach a, a resistance factor that, that will not sink and will not disappear. It'll, it'll uh, reach um, you know, it's a bearing capacity for what they need.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, I'm just looking just off some of the um, made some notes here along the way. Uh, just took to the boardwalk. Um, talked, there was some discussion about going down uh, Bolton Center Road and the paved, which we're going to. We discussed uh, what Sandra had mentioned during the public information meeting. Not having a uh, bituminous concrete uh, blacktop sidewalk. And we, we have um, in our revisions sent over to the CROG um, through their funding, uh, we, we proposed, proposed concrete sidewalk for that going down the hill. The sidewalk will be cross-pitched. Um, you know, one way or the other, if we're going with, will we have the slope away from us going towards the field, it will be cross-pitched all the way down. It'll be as cross-slope. So the water will not gather um, in a direction straight downhill. It will constantly be draining off to one side or the other. Uh, the areas where we're in a cut up in the top portion, it will drain towards the street and it will travel as usually it does down, down the roadway in the gutter line. Get a little farther, it'll cross-pitch off to the field. And it will just, it's only a five-foot walk. It's not going to have much impact. It will cross-pitch and go down the slope. Uh, you know, towards the field, to the grass. Um, I'm just looking at my other stuff. Oh, and also I, I do, I, I hear everybody with the, the comment of continuing it down to Brandy Street. And the reason why we stopped where we did at that point was it was a, it was a big uh, drainage component that takes place to get us through that large ditch. There is a four-foot diameter culvert that comes from Hannover Farms over. And uh, that becomes a very expensive portion of it. That's kind of the funding aspect of it. Um, I will look at other options perhaps, and I'm just kind of sort of thinking out loud here right now and we'll, we'll take, we'll definitely take a look at that. I understand everybody's um, everybody's concerns with that. Well, maybe we could cross just a little bit farther up the hill with a uh, uh, block crossing, as they call it, not at an intersection, not down at the bottom. We'll try to get them across the street earlier. Um, perhaps with RFPs, the flashing, rapid flashing beacons to, to provide some uh, protection there. But I understand um, people's concerns and I will uh, will definitely take a look. I know Rodney, you've discussed that too. Um, we'll take a look at that. Um, just looking at my notes here. I got kind of both the, the stop sign notes with the other ones here. Um,
So Amanda, ask you a question while you're looking?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Can you clarify what material the trail is going to be made out of from the barn down to the end of the driveway before you get to the hill?
We will, through the, through the field, we're going to have a gravel pathway. Um, when we get to the, the parking area, however it's configured, because I know we have the the architect's renderings and what's there now and depending on what happens and when it happens. But once we get past the driveway and we do the switchback that runs at five percent
Yeah.
down to Bolton Center Road, that will be the same method of paving. Uh, uh, that'll be a hardscape like the walkway would be going down because we will not be able to hold um the gravels in that kind of slope there.
Okay, so it'll be the concrete that you're proposing there?
Yeah, and there's, and then we get into the concrete, there's some different uh, options for surfacing the concrete for, for looks, for aesthetic purposes.
So if an individual pulls in with their, their wheelchair van, gets out of their wheel, out of their van with their wheelchair, they'll be able to go down this path, how far? And so from the barn?
I mean, you'll, you'll be able to go down the path to, to uh, Brandy Street. Um, I have seen, uh, uh, you know, I have um, one town where we're doing a, a pretty steep slope uh, sidewalk to, to the uh, school complexes, the, their grade grammar school, grade school and, and the high school, middle school complex. And it's probably six, seven percent. I have actually seen a person with a, with a, you know, electric wheelchair uh, traverse that fairly well. But yeah, the, the ADA portion will end at uh, Bolton Center Road. Before you, at, at the intersection of the driveway and Bolton Center Road, before you go down the hill.
Before you go down the hill, okay.
Correct.
Amanda.
This is totally off the wall, but did we consider? Because there's lots of concerns about drainage and the historic nature of the farm. Was there any consideration given to like at the bottom of the driveway, a crosswalk across Bolton Center and putting the trail on the other side of Bolton Center?
You mean at the top?
Oh, and on the far side.
Near Bayberry from the top?
Yeah, like on the south, the south side.
Yeah, it was just a little more challenging on that side to do that. Um, and that's, you know, also part of the reason why we did stay. Um, there was some talk about traversing the field up top, on the top half. That's why we did why it was suggested that we stayed closer to Bolton Center Road, really only, you know, within, within the would be the somewhat normal right-of-way of Bolton Center Road. We're not, we're not down into the field. We're following the road. Um, and then the only way we can do that, the only way we can do that at the grade we're at is if we do follow um, follow the road within, within a certain distance, because that now becomes considered a sidewalk and we can exceed five percent for a sidewalk following road. It's a, it's kind of a quirk of the um, the accessibility uh, rules, but that's, that's why we did that.
Tim. Yeah. Withdraw my comment. Are, are we impeding at all on, on the uh, on the historical site at all?
Um, you know, with, with, I don't know the exact limits of this site, but we are not that far off of Bolton Center Road. We're probably ten to fifteen feet off the edge of the pavement, Bolton Center Road. Um, we are grading down the hill somewhat, but we're not down into the field below. The, what I understand is the encampment area.
Right.
Um, yeah. Following that comment or that question, I, I, I think that Rodney means up at the top. Joe, up where the, where the new curb is planned, that portion of the field. No? Because I remember when the archeologic, the students did their dig last year, I thought I remember seeing flags right in that area where they discovered.
Close, but not, it doesn't, it doesn't impact. On, on one of the renderings of the plans, he actually has that box drawn and thi, this does have to get approved by SHIPAL. State Historic Preservation Commission. That's correct. And they've already had, they've already had one glance at it, as I recall, Joe. Yes, they did. And you know, they, they made, they were obviously uh, you know, let us know that we are in the area, which of the, you know, the Rochambeau encampment historical area, we all know that. Um, so that wasn't, wasn't anything, you know, surprising to us. Uh, but we will, when we finish it, let's get the final um, footprint of this, we'll, we'll actually, we'll send it back to them um, and get their, get their comments on it.
So on that hillside, Sandra clicked an old piece of memory on mine. That hillside back in, maybe this was at the fifties, the early sixties was, was, was cut back.
Oh, it was built up because it had been cut back by the
They cut it back and then they brought it up. Right, so.
And we built it.
Right.
Called Daniel.
Okay, so I, I, I did remember that correctly.
Or maybe even your dad.
Yeah.
Was that long ago.
Yeah, it was, it was quite a ways back. The only reason I, I bring that up is that that portion has been modified as opposed to what originally was there already. So it is, you know, it's not, it's not that quite that pristine portion as, as the rest of the farm.
But it's still, it's still going through the architectural. I'm sorry, the archeolot, archaeological preserve as designated by the State Historic Society. And I think you need
Thank you, Sandy.
Sorry.
Yeah, we know, we know that, that they, they have, they have to do the approvals, but that's everything we do there, they have to do their approvals on. And so everything that we're, will do or can do has to pass their, their test period.
Yes.
Is it an option to approve part of this design?
No.
We have to improve all or nothing based on CROG?
Far as I know.
CROG, CROG has approved the plans. So we've, we've already scaled the project back.
Correct.
And we had to put in for a scope change and they have already approved the scope change. So this is the scope that they have approved at this point.
And, and what, what is, uh, could they approve a second scope change?
We don't, we're running out of time here somewhere. Like I, I
There are times when
I, I don't, I don't know. I honestly don't know if they would approve another scope change. Do you have any sense, Joe? I mean, you've had more conversations with
Yeah, um, I would imagine if, if we came up with a really true hardship of this, that would be our original scope change is because the drainage associated with the um, the Brandy Street leg of the project got um, a little expensive with the drainage that we had in there. So that's why we, we scaled it back because we would have exceeded um, what they, what they awarded us. So we backed off. Now we're a little under it. I mean, there, we can, it allows us for some minor tweaks of, of our, of our basic limits of our design right now. That's, that's fine, but um, you know, you never know until you ask them. I mean, that's, that's the ultimate thing. I, you know, I wouldn't, couldn't say yes or no, but um, we do have to kind of keep this moving forward to keep the funding in place.
I, I concur, I concur with that, but I, you know, you guys all brought up a lot of interesting points, but when I look at the project, the, I, I, our most concern, quite frankly, is getting to the barn. That issue is, as far as engineering, that's, that's the biggie and that's where we'd be spending most of our time. Could this thing can be phase one, phase two, you know, to the barn, phase one, the other part, phase two? And so that we can continue
That's what I've
So we can at least continue the engineering on that phase one, which is significant and, and not slow this project down and give us at least another thirty days to deal with the second part. But is, is that, can we look at it that way or does that have to be approved, Jim?
Well, we're, we're, we're pretty close to having the seventy percent submission ready for what we have shown.
Now.
Yeah, there, we've been working on it at the office now, moving towards that goal. Yeah, we've been working on it at the office now, moving towards that goal. We're pretty, getting pretty close.
Is there a deadline on either starting construction or completing construction based on, under the CROG grant?
I don't know of a specific deadline. They want us to, they want us to keep moving the project along. The project has gotten stalled a couple of times at this point. They just want us to keep moving and making positive progress, but I don't know of a specific deadline.
Mr. Chairman, should we discuss our views and opinions on this at this time? Or make a motion first and then have discussion? How's, how's the best procedure for that?
A motion would be awesome.
Well, I would make a motion that we approve the trail, the current plan for the Heritage Farm Trail.
Is there a second?
Well, second in the discussion.
Is there any additional discussion?
I'll voice my opinion on it. I've been thinking about it over the last year or so and seeing the, the various, uh, iterations of plans. We walked the trail after the last meeting, uh, few of us, measured it out to scale and figured out where the path went. And overall, I think it's great that we'll be able to enjoy more of the farm in a easily accessible manner. There's some great views there. You know, I, I don't really walk up in, I, you don't, right now with the hay, you wouldn't be able to walk there unless you have a path. I think that's, I think that's nice. Mather had a good idea. I don't want to steal your thunder, but the chip and fill was a good idea. But the concrete also works. I know there were some comments that concrete looks nice on some other trails and, and it would provide good grip. So, we're going in, we, we still have those little tweaks that can make it even better. Overall, I like the design. Um, it would be fantastic if we could walk all the way to the high school. Great safety for the kids. Great exercise. It's, makes it a nice connected town. Via the connectivity grant. Imagine that. Yeah. I mean, right now it's a road with guardrails and telephone poles. And there's a big hill. So you really can't see the farm right now. So my feeling is it, I, I probably wouldn't be opposed. It would be a little different if it's like weaving through the farm, I think, like across the whole thing, but along the road, I think it'll just be a nice addition for everyone to access the farm and, and safely travel along that road. Uh, what else? Yeah. Also along the aesthetic group, you know, uh, Lebanon is a fantastic, everyone loves Lebanon green. And I think part of it is because they can access it.
They have a sidewalk around it.
People really like to walk around it. So I, I, change, change is scary and fear is a mile wide and an inch deep. So, uh, I would support those. Amanda, moving to floor.
I'm very much 50 50 right now. I would say my top concerns are drainage, right? As someone who uses the other trail from fire department to, um, you know, the green, I, I do see how drainage has become a major issue. And upkeep and maintenance, right, of, of that, that trail, um, almost twisted an ankle on it after the, after the rainstorms, right? But then my, on the other side, my other big concern is safety of pedestrians and cyclists on that road. I went there, you know, before the meeting, I ride, I, I do drive that road frequently. There are people walking and you cannot see, like if you, you have to stop like on a dime because you can't go into the other lane to pass people because you don't have the visibility to see if anybody's coming up the hill or vice versa. So I can see both sides. I, I am hesitant, you know, I, it's, it's really the execution. So I, I think that if it's properly executed, it could be great, but I do have some concerns about that execution.
One.
Uh, I thought about this long and hard and I solicited a lot of opinions from a lot of different people, including Mather and Tim. We had a good walk out there and they, they helped change, were, um, changed the way I, I looked at, at it. And I appreciate that. Um, so, and I appreciate all the opinions that I've, that I've gotten. And I really solicited a lot of people's opinions because I wanted to make sure that where I ended up, I was an objective opinion because I had a lot invested emotionally in this farm, having helped write the grant for it in the year 2000 and, um, worked on nine years worth of Friends of Rose Farm work parties where.
10 years.
10 years. Thank you, Richard. You would know, you would know. With, uh, you know, some really hard labor where we brought the farm back from a, a pit to, of the gem that it is today. Um, and, but I also am a big trail advocate. I, I used to serve on the, on the Connecticut Greenways Council. I helped, I worked with DOT when that, the connection was being made between Manchester and the commuter lot. I, I walk on trails all the time. So I've got, I, I feel like I have a good perspective on, from the trail perspective, but also from the farm perspective. And, um, where I'm coming down on this is that, and, and having listened to a lot of opinions, the opinions that I solicited are mostly saying they don't like the section of the trail between the barn and at the bottom of Bolton Center Road. And that's what I feel also. Um, I feel like the, the loop, the, the curve that goes out into the eastern field really detracts from the historic landscape of the farm. I think that it, despite what, I think it was Joe who said this, and maybe others said this. I, I don't think that the haying equipment is, uh, is going to be able to run easily over and over that. And I, and their hay fields in Bolton and across the state of Connecticut are dwindling. I think we need to do everything we can to preserve all of our hay fields. And this would, this would impact that hay field. And also this, the original intent of this whole grant was connectivity and I love that idea. And so I support connecting the town hall to the barn. You're connecting one thing to another. There's a destination. There's no connectivity after you pass from the barn. You get to the bottom of the hill and what, what is, what's there? There's no connection there. And I think that if this is, this is built, I think it's going to feel and look like a, an unfinished project with no destination. And I think people in the future are going to look at that and say, well, what, well, okay. So what now? What? Where's that supposed to go? What, what's that for? I think it's always going to feel like, oh, there's something, there's, it just doesn't, it doesn't feel right to have, to just end the path there. So, um, you know, mostly for the, the historic nature of the farm, the aesthetics of the farm and the lack of connectivity for the, the eastern portion of the, of the trail. I won't support the design as presented, but I would support the path, um, between the town hall and then ending somewhere near the kiosks. So that's why, that's where my question came from about whether we could do another scale back. And which kind of gets to what Bob was saying about phase one or phase two possibly too.
Mather. Well, I've looked at it a few times in the last couple of months as well with Tim and Gwen and others. Amanda and I were there tonight. Um, and, uh, I, I'm in, I'm really in support of the connectivity part of it. I really think that's important. All the times I've been there, or most of the times I've been there, I've seen other people there enjoying the farm, walking around. I've seen people walking up Bolton Center Road, up and down, you know, dodging cars and, you know, people flying up and down that road. And thought to myself, geez, how nice would it be to have a sidewalk up the side of that road. To Gwen's point, it kind of does go to nowhere. But one of my favorite views of the farm is pulling out of Brandy Street and looking up and seeing the whole farm. Cause at the top, you don't see it as it's falling away from you. You see the far view, but not the farm. I love seeing all the stone walls and all of that. So maybe that would bring people down there to see that. Small significance. I, uh, I, I guess my two concerns about the part, and I, I do support this, this two phased idea. I think connecting from here to the, to the barn is a no brainer. The other part, the, the S curve through the field doesn't really bother me tremendously. To Tim's point, it doesn't, you know, crisscross through the entire farm. I would not support that. I do think it's important to have a little loop that goes out into the field. It gets people to actually go out in a patch of grass. That's a, a kind of a cool thing that most people have never done. So I like that aspect of it, but I, I guess the hay operation, the material that it's paved with is, I guess, still a question mark. And in my mind too, the maintenance of it going forward. You know, and I was out there tonight on the, the mowed, you know, now that it's mowed and the grass is even higher than when we were there. You know, grass is falling over it. It's kind of, you know, especially after they hay it, then there's, you know, I've been in many hayfields, hay, haying, and it leaves a lot of debris and so forth and all of it. So does that create kind of a mess? Then is it more maintenance for the town to clean up and keep after and so forth? The mowing that happens around the, the, the house and the barn now. It occurs to me that, that whatever mows that on a weekly basis could mow one strip down one side and back up the other to keep the tall grass from being imminent to the, to the path itself. Probably wouldn't add that much time. But, uh, I just wonder who would mow that and how and when and how often and how, going forward, how it's maintained.
You had the other comment, if they wanted to use a tractor too on the width, but I don't know. Maybe that's not.
Yeah, five feet. If, yeah, that's probably not a concern. The, the road mowing tractor. Uh, you wouldn't worry with that.
No.
That would be too wide for five feet.
Those are my thoughts.
Oh, you're up. No?
I go back with Ernest. I was the one that got the money for the archaeological dig to be able to get the six farms across Connecticut to create the W3R. Got the money to, to establish this farm as a historical site. So I guess I would say very clearly that that's where my heart lies. It's the historical nature. I think connectivity trail is a lovely thing to think about. But the property is a historical piece that belongs to not only Bolton, but to the state and to the nation. If you look at it as a piece of our revolutionary history, our pre-revolutionary history. It was, you know, the, before Rochambeau, if you know your history a little bit, you know that it was, um, the site of the pastor's farm. The establishment of the Congregational Church, which this year is the 300th anniversary, correct? And so my instinct is to preserve it at all costs. This is a lovely idea to connect it. We have roads out there that we could widen. We can work on to do the second part. If you wanted to have the trail go across the upper part between the town hall and the barn, that's one thing. Let's disturb what we know is, has this historical record. I think we'd be wrong.
That's it. You're, again, is you're not?
Thank you.
Oh, me. All right. Well, you go back to.
Olden times.
Yeah, well, I had the honor to be the negotiator for the purchase of that with a board of selectmen. So, and obviously I, I, I knew the importance and I still do the importance of that property for what it was and what it is and what it does. And one of the things that we always had in mind and is that you have this wonderful thing and it should be shared. And I think this, this is the way it can be shared, not just with our folks in town, with other people who are really are into the historical, historical aspect of this thing. And it's not as if this is piece of grass on the other side of this side has any more, more or less significance than what's there. And it doesn't impact what's buried underneath there. And this allows everyone to see what, what this beautiful piece of property is. And I, I can't see how this pathway would have a negative impact at all. I would support it.
The whole pathway or the first half of the second?
I, for me, the whole damn thing. I, I, I think it's time to get off the, get off the horse and just do it. And I think we, we've looked at, and Mather had a great idea for, for we, uh, will just stop that pathway. There's, there's concrete with, you can put something on it and as a, what's it called? Chip.
Chip seals.
Chip seals, which actually leaves a, a, it looks like a gravel finish, but it's actually a solid, a, a, a solid, um, field that can be maintained.
And color.
It, well, you can do whatever you want with it and it doesn't wash. And, and, and we'll still maintain that, if you will, that, that real character. So with that, I, I think the thing, the, the important thing on our part.
Yep.
Is just to do it right. That's the key. And that's it. So, so with that, I, I, I would, I would, I would be in favor.
It's my turn.
Your turn.
I think it would be a great asset for the town to be able to have anybody just park in the parking lot, go sit on the top of the hill and enjoy the view rather than, uh, have to just sit in your car. The trail, as it goes down to the bottom and ends, is actually not the end. It's only the beginning of the next trail. It's actually the, a $400,000 match and another $2 million of money to get you to the high school. And of course, whatever it takes to, uh, get it approved. So I mean, that's not in the cards at the moment. And, and it also ends at the bottom of the hill. And is there a way? Could you focus more on getting a path along the stone and going down behind and connecting to the other trails that are on the other side of the farm, on the, on the west side? So just, you know, bike paths, whatever. I mean, so it's not necessarily the end, but it's somewhere. If we do nothing, then we're nowhere. So I, I, if we go nowhere with it, I, I'm not heartbroken. But I think it'd be a great thing because I do walk on that hill and it's pretty ugly when the sun's out. The cars don't see you, you don't see them. And, and so I'm all for it myself. So at this point.
Can I have the motion read back please?
Nobody's addressed my question about safety.
Excuse me?
Safety of the open trail.
Can you have the motion read back?
Yes, please.
Yes. Um, Ellie, can you read, uh, Casey, can you read that back?
Yes, let me find it real quick. That was a lot of news.
Sure. It's very eloquent.
So Tim Sadler moved to approve the current plan. Pam Sawyer seconded.
For discussion.
Well, that was just my side comment. So I did second it, but it reserved my right to not vote for it.
Okay. So, so.
We haven't closed comments yet.
Right, right.
And so I, I have to speak to, to Mr. retreat's concerns. Quite frankly, I disagree with them and we, we have agreed and disagreed in most of our lives, as ancient as they are. But, um, what we're talking about is personal responsibility. That's what we're talking about. That's what we're talking about. And if you're not responsible for you walking and not responsible for your children, it's your fault. What the hell ever happens? You can't blame it on what exists there. That, 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 that circumstance can happen on a walkway here or a walkway anywhere. Uh, I, I don't see that as, as a, as a true safety issue. I, I, I just see the, the, the benefit of this thing far exceeds any, any miniscule safety issue. I'm, I'm sorry that we disagree on this, but I, I do not share that concern that this is a safety issue.
Wasn't there a lady that was seriously injured on the trails? With the bicycles she was walking and those are eight, eight, 10 feet wide, eight feet wide. So I, that's, I don't, I don't see that as an issue as well. I hope we answered your question there.
I haven't answered.
Which was out, right. Any other discussion? Uh, all in favor? Aye, aye. So that's five yes. All, any opposed?
Yes.
That's two noes. Pam and Gwen, uh, motion passed five to two. Now we move on to discussion of selectmen salary.
Joe, I think we're all set with you. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Hey, thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, we want to table this.
Can we take a two minute break?
Yes. I make a motion at this time that we table the discussion of the selectman's salary.
Second.
Can we take a five minute break?
Yes. Any discussion on this?
There's no discussion on a tabling.
Oh, it's being tabled. Okay.
When is it tabled to? Sorry?
Cause we have the.
But what day was it tabled to? It's the, the, the June 17th information session?
No, so after that, it would have to be just a live meeting.
So further notice.
It's currently tabled for this meeting only. And we will set it up on a date after the 17th.
Did we need to discuss something that was relevant to the June 17th?
The reason it was on the agenda is so that we could talk about it for the June 17th.
Right. That's what I thought.
That's what I thought.
Oh, oh, okay.
Withdraw the motion.
Yeah, sure. Okay, we're gonna take a couple minute recess. Five minute recess.
I understood what the research.
Recording stopped.
Discussion on.
Why not?
Those chairs are low to sit in for a long time.
Here, right after discussion of the salary.
We have, we have all these people waiting for me. Can we do it right after that?
Yes.
Bye, thanks for coming.
Okay, I should not ask.
Some of the sites like that now.
Let me know when you're back in.
That's what I was trying to do, you know?
Like I said, I can sit on the box.
Just the information and, and we want to be clear, oh, you want the meeting set up.
Okay, apparently, apparently we suck that at the last. Okay.
Let's go.
There might be some cake left from right there for Tim. We'll check the fridge, that's all.
Alright, okay, I'll start the recording. We're gonna bring the meeting back. So the discussion on the selectmen salary. Um, I'm gonna table that until our next meeting. And, well, okay, go ahead.
But we decided we needed to talk about it before, before the next meeting. That's why it was on.
We're gonna postpone that next meeting.
Oh, we are?
For the seventeenth, right.
We're, we're not going forward with it on the seventeenth? Why is that?
Yeah, why?
Because I just don't want to do it, so. This is my, uh, my wildcard.
I have just a little bit of information about, you remember that the last, the last information session, um, we said there should be more, there should be public, there should be documents given to the public ahead of time. So I, um, emailed Tim White. Um, and then he didn't get back to me with the revisions until yesterday. So but I, so I, I will continue to work. I'm gonna, they only need a little bit of tweaking, but they will be ready um, for, I thought that we were planning on the seventeenth and they would, they would be ready for the seventeenth, but it sounds like they don't need to be now.
Uh, they don't need to be.
Okay, so are we gonna, are we gonna take, are we gonna set another date for that information session?
Probably, probably more in August.
Oh, okay.
Alright.
So.
Uh, when, where did, now, next is appointments and resignations.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm making a, a motion that we appoint Kevin Drake uh, to the Bolton Heritage Farm as an alternate member.
Uh, I'll second that. Oh, I don't have to, go ahead. I'll second it, okay. Is there any discussion?
Been very active in, in historical preservation areas in Nantucket and has been an asset to the commission so far and doing volunteer issues.
So. I'm the board of directors for the Manchester Historical Society.
We have, we have the paperwork to force.
I've helped in a as a contributor to the group for approximately two years now. The Farm Commission is a wonderful group and cares and promotes a special piece of town history. I really enjoy helping the group. A
And want to pursue a more formal role.
There you go.
We'll, we'll ask him about his penmanship later.
It's not that bad.
I'll second your motion. I'll second your motion. Okay, all in favor?
Mather already did.
Yeah, Mather's second, Mather's second. Thank you.
You gotta be aware of what you've just done.
Uh, make a motion to reappoint Brooke to the library board full-time member.
Second.
Uh, is there any discussion?
Longtime member, so it's just a lot of work for the library.
Uh, thank you very much, Brooke. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, seven yes.
Mr. Chairman, I bring, make motion before us, uh, reappoint Claire Fazina, the life, the library board is a full-time member.
Second.
She's formerly a librarian at the high school and she has been an outstanding member and she brought the note fee issued to us. Uh, and we greatly appreciate her service.
Very good. Thank you very much, Claire. Is there any, uh, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My motion to reappoint Ann Malucci for the Heritage Farm Commission is a full-time member. She's a longstanding member and a very great advocate of the art trust. And other items.
Mather, Clark, second that. Thank you very much. And, and all in favor? Aye, seven yes.
Mr. Chairman, we added one more. You, uh, uh, we had the late submission, uh, for redefined to be reappointed to the Fox Mission as long-term members. How's that help?
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Rita. That's seven zero. Yes.
If I may, because we have a group here, uh, wants to talk about item under new business items.
Nine B?
Nine B, I, I move, we moved that up to that'd be the next item.
Five F. Okay, uh.
My second.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I will, um, move it up, without, without changing the number because it really is not a retirement or resignation.
Oh, right.
Just move it just forward.
Just moving forward.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, seven yes. Uh, so this is a discussion on possible act of wreaths, wreaths of America. Approval, so. Do you want to speak about it? Yes.
Chairman, we have something in our packet. Uh, it is a project that needs local coordination. And, uh, they're excited that we have some of the authorities that have had an interest in it. And as a military, you know, I would greatly appreciate their efforts.
Thank you, go ahead.
I'm Jennifer Brown from the Green Ridge Mountain Road.
I'm Janet Assar from Seventy-Eighth of Han Road.
We both were born and raised in Bolton and we're passionate about the veterans of our town. Um, Janet and I met in East Hartford. Uh, we were into each other. We both had, uh, volunteered to do wreaths across America uh, for the past few years. And we kind of looked at each other and we said, why aren't we doing this for our town? And why aren't we representing our veterans? And there's over a hundred and
Right, one hundred and thirty-nine. We spent our Memorial Day at the cemetery writing down all of the names of veterans and their, um, branch of service. And we found it interesting, there was only three women who actually had plaques at the cemetery, all the rest were veterans. We said we're gonna try to make this work.
Right, these ladies have a greater survivability.
So, so I guess this would require a distribution through, uh, who supplies the wreaths?
Well, the way it works, I talked, I spent over an hour on the phone the other day from a woman in DC, um, who, uh, represents this district for the Southwest America. So what our job is, well, our first job is to get approval from you and then we can proceed, um, to get sponsors and donations from people in the community. So what we wanted to do is we were gonna target all the local businesses and then Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, the Senior Center, the Fire Department, like get as many people involved as we can. Um, we are confident that we're gonna get a lot of sponsors and we really don't think that we will um, have a problem sponsoring the one hundred and thirty-nine wreaths at the meeting. Um, my, on personal note, my father-in-law is buried in Arlington Cemetery and every year we, um, buy a wreath for him for seventeen dollars and we always buy a wreath for our known person. And we're hoping to kind of push that in the community to, um, get as many wreaths as we can. And if we get additional wreaths, then we can, um, roll them over to next year. So they don't go to waste. So that's our, our goal.
So I think my first thought would be you two ladies should join the Veterans Commission. That's first. Well, you, you have some other members there that could maybe go along with you and, and help. And then we got it, you're, you're, we then give you the opportunity to be on the board and try to recruit other town uh, associations like the Boy Scouts and whatever. So other than that, what would we have to do as, as a board?
I think you just need to make a motion and that would.
Do you like our support? Is that what you're looking for?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this project. This project, uh, as presented by Janet Assar and Jennifer Baum.
And I would like to second that as a veteran and I really appreciate what you do. And it should went on years ago and I thank you for stepping up.
Absolutely.
I do want to add to that, um, we, we both know that we have another cemetery in town. This will be for Bolton Center Cemetery only uh, this year. Um, and it was funny, Jen said, well, we know that people are gonna bring up, well, what about the other cemetery and the other veterans in town? But our focus this year, being the first year, is to really just focus on this cemetery. And really just try to do it right, make sure that all the veterans have a wreath. And we also think that it's a really important, um, learning factor for the families, the kids, the grandkids of the, um, the veterans. You know, because every wreath will be placed on a, and the person's name will be said and they say thank you, your servants, so. So, and we're hoping to get really the younger generation involved to learn and know more about the veterans.
We'll find that there are quite a few in Corrigan Cemetery as well. Right.
I think it's great. Uh, all in favor? Any other discussion?
No.
No, all in favor? That's seven yes. Motion, Patty, thank you very much.
Your support.
Please keep in touch with the selectmen's office.
Thank you.
See your, uh, application for those.
So approval of minutes.
Can we table that?
Yes, yep.
I'll make a motion to table the number seven approval of minutes, A, B, and C until a future meeting.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I mean, seven yes. Consider an act on accounts payable?
Chairman?
Yes.
Make a motion that we accept which has payable as projected to be total of eighty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-one thousand seventy-five cents.
Is there any discussion? One?
Alright, yeah, thank you. Page eight. Uh, if, could, maybe Jim, could you explain the three different, why, there were three repairs and annual testing of fire apparatus. One is for one thousand five hundred forty-six sixty-seven, one's for about fifty-seven hundred, one's for about, uh, eleven thousand.
We have Mr. Pereira, our fire chief on, online.
Matt, are you there? Nope. Okay, do you have any?
Yep, I'm here.
Oh, okay, there he is. Ready. Repairs and testing of fire apparatus. And I, I didn't quite see the numbers you were reading.
Uh, page eight at the top.
Yeah, fifteen hundred forty-six, fifty-six, six, sixty-eight. And ten nine six two.
I rounded up the first, the last, the second two.
Uh, do you know what those were testing?
Yeah, that was, I, yeah, that I believe was the, um, annual testing, the DOT testing, the pump testing, um, and any other last minute maintenance on, I believe it was the ladder truck, the rescue and the.
I'm just wondering why there's three separate ones. Three separate charges.
The three separate trucks.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, three separate.
They're also different.
We use. Yeah, I believe I'm, I don't have it right in front of me. I believe it is the ladder truck and the tanker. They go to one vendor and the engine goes to a second.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have, I have one more question. Page fourteen. There is a charge, uh, from Shamrock Tree Service for tree work at the Heritage Farm. And I'm just wondering what tree work was done at the Heritage Farm?
I don't know.
Okay, could you track that down?
I can.
Find in the future? Thank you.
Uh, any other discussion?
Uh, that's all those are my questions.
Uh, Nathan Jacobson, page twelve. Most of them have a label, but do you know what the general consultation was that was close to a grant?
It, it includes things like having conversations about the Vernon and Corrigan intersection. Having conversations about, um, what else did we talk about? We talked about the rapid flash and beacons that we're looking at putting over on TS Crossing Road for the trail crossing. But it's, it's things like that.
Okay.
Those are two that I remember we had discussed. Um, and I, and I know that Joe was actually out here for an onsite consultation for some drainage work over on Carpenter Roads with AJ.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Tim? Are you voting? Okay, that's seven yes, here for a no. Uh, budget transfers?
Chairman?
Yes.
Do you have a little budget request, Chairman? Transfer twenty-two hundred dollars on the front side of patient training to regular table?
You have a second on that?
Yeah, yes, a lot more.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Aye, seven yes. Zero no. The fifteen hundred doesn't have to be, the hundred, hundred doesn't have to be two thousand does, right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we transfer two thousand dollars for the Fire Commission for Professional Education to Fire Security.
For SEBC annual testing.
Is there a second?
A second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, seven yes. Okay.
We have a highway.
Yeah.
Request to transfer seventy-five hundred dollars for things, uh, for the cat station clearing.
Wait, wait.
Saying, oh, saying, I'm sorry, including, I'm sorry, my apologies.
Is there a second on that, yes?
This is cool.
Is there any discussion required? Uh. All in favor? Aye. Moving on, uh.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
You never got the joke. Uh, who seconded, who seconded that? Bob?
Yes, he did.
Bob?
Bob Moore?
Moore?
Okay, thank you.
The board of.
It's, it's.
Yeah, we're gonna, okay, well, doing my best here.
No, no, no.
Board of Ed bid waiver, uh, we're on to nine, a new business. Uh, the Board of Ed bid waiver. The Novus and Garage Project, this is informational only. Uh, the award, to award Bellford Bolton High School Garage Project in the amount of two hundred, two thousand, nine hundred, eighty-four, twenty-five dollars. Bell, Bellford is part of the Amnia Partners, which is nationally buying consortium, Joe Collins spoke at the auditor, who shared the Board of Ed needs to approve the bid waiver, not the, the Board of Selectmen, even though it is in their budget, please note there is. Two hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred dollars already approved in capital for this project, so they are much lower than what John was giving as a quote for this project. And the Novus part is to retroactively waive the bid to award Novus insight on the managed IT support for twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, now we go on to. We've got feet done, uh, Jim's report. Well, the administrators were for, sorry. Everyone. And. Go through that, or you want to?
I, I would just entertain any questions anybody has.
Hey, I have one. Uh, second bullet, the RFQ for the schematic plan of a new town hall, that's actually not, if, I didn't think that we were going out for a bid for a schematic plan, I thought we were going out for a request for qualifications.
That's what RFQ stands for.
Okay, but it wasn't to do a plan though, right? Uh, I know we went over.
So, so. We amet-, we amended the document as we agreed and put it out to bid. So the scope of the project that they would be hired for is to produce a schematic plan. But the RFQ is about their qualifications to do that, though.
So the plan is like step two?
Yeah.
Got it, all right. Yep, thank you.
And I believe we got somewhere in the order of seven or eight.
Okay, oh, oh, they, they were open today, right? Did you, okay.
That was.
Can you, um, clarify on this steep grant, what work was already done to rooms A and B with the project that just finished versus what would get done with this deep grant?
So the only, the only work that's been done to date is putting, repairing the floor so it's flat.
Okay.
Because we had to remove asbestos, latent glue and tile off the floor, so that was been repaired, and we put a mid-grade carpeting in those two rooms. I mean, this steep grant project will take us at least two years to get to construction, so we need to be able to use the rooms in the meantime.
Oh. And the, the, the plan is to merge them, right?
The, the plan is, the, the, the plan is to make it so that it could either use as two separate rooms or one large room and incorporate storage that will be, uh, useful for the registrars of voters as well as the recreation department.
And upgrade the bathroom.
And upgrade the bathrooms to, right now, a- and there's, there's a lot of work to be done, because we have to go, you know, we created basically a general plan to be able to get a budget.
Mm-hmm.
But there's a lot more detail, we've got to go into a plan, but yes, right now it includes two accessible restaurants.
Oh. And then, do you have an update on like, the demolition?
Active demolition is supposed to resume, they, they thought it was going to be this week, but it won't be till next week, they're waiting on test results.
Oh, I thought they did, it looked like more of the building was torn.
Well, they might, they might have started on a section, but.
Okay.
I know they can't really go wholesale and take it till they get the rest of those test results back, so, so.
On the blast or concrete?
On the, on the sandblasted concrete, that's correct. That was the delay from like a month ago. Yeah. That we talked about.
Yeah.
Well, they, they just, they just finished sandblasting last week. Oh, so they've been sandblasting? They've been sandblasting this whole time. For results on it, they've. So they've been, they've, they've been doing testing as an, on an ongoing basis. Okay. So they're waiting for the test results for the last section that they sandblasted. Yep.
Those are the minutes we pressed on, makes sense.
I stopped by there last week and saw the old CD room where we used to have gym class. The thick con-, the concrete roof, that's a big bomb shelter.
Hmm.
Big, huge rebar and it's pretty, pretty cool.
Do you have an estimated end date?
Right around the beginning of July. Dodgeball in there.
Okay, for the whole building to be done, that's a lot of work between now and the end of.
Yeah.
And then I see on here the issue that Sandra raised earlier about installing the required camera and video storage, so presumably that's just, we only have the one ballot box, right?
We only have one ballot box, that's correct.
So.
So do we just have the sign up and no cameras? But we have cameras out there already, so we've, we've been conducting research, and we fully intend to include the registrars of voters' office, now that we've conducted the research. Uh, we probably will be looking to meet with them next Tuesday when they're in their office, we've conducted research, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, that's right. We'll have to find another date, but we've collected information both from the vendor that already supplies cameras to the town, and we, we think that's going to be really too difficult. Because they wouldn't have access to it easily, they'll have to go through a vendor, but by working with Novus, it'll be an onsite solution that they will have access to along with the town clerk.
In terms of live access in the, the historical footage?
Correct. And it will be, it will be stored on site, and we're, right now, what Novus is proposing is a solution that will allow for expansion in the future if we end up with greater needs.
Now, what, I mean, and this may be a question for Sandy, but what is the retention?
It's a year.
You only have to save a year worth of footage?
Yes, a year.
So is that better?
Unless a complaint is filed, which is, you have to wait until the complaint is resolved.
Right, that makes.
Which could be two or three years.
Right, but do we anticipate, so what do you, what do you, Jesus is clearly.
Yes, we've anticipated, we've anticipated, in fact, it takes, it, yes. Go ahead.
Thank you, um, I just want to point out that the camera has to be located within twenty feet of the ballot box, and it has to be able to record all sides of the ballot box. So, whereas the.
For the.
Whereas the, thank you for your board. Camera that's on the front of the assessor's door is too far away, so you're either going to have to move a camera or add a camera.
It's going to be a new cam. New camera.
Now, it just, it's just going to take your picture as you're putting more than one ballot in it.
Oh, do you, oh, yeah, that's a good question, do you have to steadily record, or can you have it motion activated?
Since, I believe, and, correct me if I'm wrong, it's from the date that absentee ballots are issued until the end of.
Until the, the votes of the polls.
Okay, so it's.
Yeah, so as long as nobody's apt to, and, and in fact, that box is physically locked.
Otherwise.
Otherwise, so.
Terrified is the world to that thing, for, for years.
Mr. Chairman, a question?
Yeah.
Now, from the legislature or from?
Secretary of State.
Um, it came from the Connecticut Legislature, um, and the, uh, April, and that, um, the governor signed it into law in June of twenty-twenty-four. The effective July one, twenty-twenty-five, and on, on April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, the Secretary of State issued the regulations that said of effective.
In a month.
Effective July one, you got to be operational.
That gave us what we needed to be able to spec out a system, until they waited, until then, we couldn't.
Yeah.
Of course.
What's, what's thinking, Mr. Moore?
On that note, I move we adjourn.
Second, all in favor? Aye. 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 We'll be ready.
All right, who seconded?
Uh, who seconded? Sadler, Sadler.
Thank you. Have a good night.